I call to April two thousand and twenty four, Town of Clayton, Board Meeting to Order. We will now have roll call.
Good evening Chair, I'll do a conduct the roll call. Chair Moore.
Present.
Vice Chair Dupree.
Present.
Board Member Bland. Board Member Gleason. Board Member Lee. Board Member Lipscomb. Board Member Williams.
Here.
And Board Member Saraski.
Here.
And Board Member Applewhite.
Here.
Chair and also alternate member Spence. Thank you sir, all board members are present, we do have a quorum.
Thank you. As a reminder, to all who would like to speak tonight as we proceed, please speak clearly and loudly as possible to the microphone. I would try to remind people as we go along, it's hard to hear, and hopefully I don't offend you if I ask you to speak a little louder. Will all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. You may be seated. On item two, I do not believe we have any adjustments to the agenda, is that correct?
That is correct Chair.
Alrighty, we will move to item three, approve of the March two thou- March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four meeting minutes. Has everybody on the planning board had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any adjustments to the minutes or corrections? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
A motion by Board Member Applewhite to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item four, public hearings. Item two thousand and twenty four dash twenty four CZM shotwell apartments. We are now here from Conrad Amito, our Planning Director.
Good evening Chair and members of the Planning Board. Conrad O'Mato, Planning Director for the Town of Clayton. And before you is a request for rezoning from, to be a conditional rezoning for residential. This will allow the use of ninety six multifamily residential units. And just as a clarification, it's from CRM corridor commercial zoning that's existing. So the ninety six multifamily residential units, some uses will be a gym, park, parking lot, active open space. The approximate density is thirty three units per acre. The project size is two point nine one acres in size. This is an aerial showing the projects, the project properties in question. They're off of shotwell, to the south would be highway seventy. And if you go off of Cameron and up mechanical, that cul-de-sac, this is where this apartment complex. To the east is an existing townhome product, to the north is a part of that development, but that is an area that's not going to be designated for any future residences at this time. Believe that's a storm control measure for the, for the development to the east. Here's a site plan that shows, so this project is a master plan with conditions of approval. And so the site plan you see will need to come back at a later date for review by the technical review committee for more detailed analysis. So what you see here is a master plan and concept. You can see that it is one building in an L shaped. And floor, I'm sorry, four floors. The bottom floor will have some garage parking. There's some onsite parking and some parking across the road there on mechanical drive on a separate lot. Here's a footprint of it, I have another PDF I can show you that, but it's four floors, approximate footprint. You see the ground floor is in the top diagram, that's going to show the parking that's going to be underneath the building. And then it has a common area noted in yellow, and then it has a similar footprint going with second, third, and fourth stories. The architect applicant is also available and they can give you much more detail about the elevations and the layout of the bedroom units there. You can see that the footprint is approximately twenty six thousand square foot. So this is the zoning, proposed zoning map, you can see the existing zoning around it, and also the conditional zoning for residential is proposed. Apparently would be CRM. The future land use map has this as high density residential, which has a lower density and a, and a less. Less density, but also is somewhat in conflict with the corridor, the commercial designation that we have. And I will allude to that later with staff's recommendation. So the high density residential zone, future land use map designation gives us some guidance with regards to the density of less, less than or equal to ten units per acre. But higher densities are allowed. This is going to be closely related to the downtown support densities. For the future land use map classification. Some of the development standards that will be applying are noted here in this slide regarding stormwater, water, sewer, and electricity. There's also going to be some landscaping buffers that will be applied. And open space amenities as well. So the minimum standards for the UDO will still be applicable where they're silent in the conditions of approval. This is a tag from the traffic that's expected from the development here. Four hundred and thirty two daily trips is estimated. Considerations for the board, before I get there, I'd like to show you the PDF that I have here. Including your packet was, are the conditions of approval in addition to that master plan. Of note is that this is an affordable housing product. There's a lot of this discussion about affordable housing and in a more, sort of a more of a market kind of context, but this is an actual state funded affordable housing product. And that is tied to condition number one in the conditions of approval. This is the, the concept, the building elevation is that were included in the master plan, as you can see, there are four stories of, looks like there are four stories, five stories total in height, including the first floor is being parking and the common area. This is an example of some of the building materials that will be used. And then the floor plans for each of the stories. The applicant is available, or before I go to the applicant, let me go back to the PowerPoint. So considerations for the planning board, tonight, we're asking that you make a recommendation for town council. Conditions may be added, modified based on your recommendation. And upon approval by town council, the master, it will be recorded with Johnston County. I'll add that the applicants are moving forward with, we're trying to get them ahead of a May tenth deadline for them to submit this project to the state for consideration of the affordable housing. So we do have a pretty tight timeline, we got this before you after two rounds of technical review committee review. We brought it before you tonight, this evening, and we're planning to take this to council on May sixth, pending no, no objections. So staff is recommending option number two. This is inconsistent with the future land use map as articulated, it's a high density residential, but we are recommending approval. And the, oh, the applicant is here to answer any questions, but I'm available, if you have any questions of staff, I can either answer them now or after their presentation.
Thank you. Does any planning board member have any questions of staff? Mr. Saraski?
Thank you sir, I have just one question, what's the maximum height allowable in the land use and the zone that they're asking for?
The, the maximum height is going to be based on the conditions. So we're looking at CRM, there, so they, they want, they have the flexibility to go as high as, as I want to say up there that they're allowed, yeah.
Any other planning board member have, have a question for staff? Alright, thank you. We're now here from the applicant.
Good evening Chair, members of the commission, my name is Link Wilson from Charlotte based Watts Leaf Architects. I'm here on behalf of two representatives of Reuter Walton, who could not be here this evening. Reuter Walton is a forty year old development company. They started out as a home builder, for the last twenty years, they have been in the multifamily business, building high quality projects as you see on the screen. I've worked with a number of folks from Reuter Walton for over the past twelve years. They build a very, very good product, they're a very good development company that they do what they say that they promised to do. I have with me this evening Andrew Plato from Raleigh based Kimley Horn, National Engineering Landscape Architecture Firm. As well as Richard Adams who prepared the traffic study. So hopefully between the three of us, we can answer any questions that you may have. Ben Dash Architect is also with me from our Charlotte office. I, I think that one of the keys here is that this is a tax credit based project. Essentially, large corporations who are very, very profitable buy tax credits every year throughout the United States. To fund housing projects such as this, and it comes then through North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. But this is a way for folks to benefit local communities, but also reduce their tax burden. It's a, it's a great national program. And I think from an architect's standpoint, this is all we do, our multifamily housing projects, whether they be for sale, for rent, or affordable housing projects like this. This very well could be a for sale housing project. High quality exterior materials, highly amenitized inside, community space, fitness space, covered, covered parking spaces. As well as each unit is highly amenitized with all the luxury items that you would see in any market rate project. So even though we say it's affordable, that's really on the rent rolls, a person still needs to be actively employed in the Clayton area. And as fast as we're seeing this area grow, as we've seen Charlotte grow, the need for affordable housing is significant. I'll let Andrew speak to any of the site, any of the site issues. Let's see, I'm just going to try to forward this, it may not work. Not sure why we can't forward, there we go. From a site standpoint, there are very large existing trees between single family homes and our proposed site. Those we will not touch, those are fully mature evergreens to create a bit of a buffer. And then we'll plan additional landscape screening between single family and our proposed development. We are in a watershed district, as you can see, bifurcating some of the parking, but we don't see that as an issue as people can walk along that surface drive and get to their stalls. We have sixty five covered, seventy surface, which really is, should be plenty for this ninety six unit apartment building. I think with that, I just want to hear from you all and the questions that you may have about this project, so we'll stand for questions. And hopefully we can, through our team, we can answer those this evening, but we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any planning board member have questions for the applicant? Ms. Bland?
Sir? I'm just interested in what we're talking about as far as affordable. I just, it's, I believe what I read is you, it will not, you cannot exceed sixty percent of the average or mean income of this area, is that right?
Right.
I know where we were in twenty twenty two, do you know where we are now? I don't know where we are now.
This is county by county and I don't have the exact area median income for, for this area, but it will be off of a twenty twenty three. Study that North Carolina Housing Finance Agency will publish.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. And I can stand for additional questions if you like Chair.
Yes. Anyone else? I have a question about parking. You said sixty five parking spaces in the garage and seventy.
Surface.
Surface, so that's a total of one thirty five for ninety six units. So I'm assuming each unit would be dedicated at least one resident parking space. I'm assuming at least one minimum per unit, or the three bedroom units may be allocated two, I'm just trying, how, how would you give the parking spaces?
So we're, one bedroom units, we have thirty seven point five percent, two bedrooms, we have thirty seven point five percent, and then three bedrooms is twenty five percent of those ninety six that, that are three bedroom. And so typically we'll see a one bedroom apartment, we'll get one, and then from, you know, two bedroom get two. And I don't have those numbers in my head if that, if that math is correct.
Right, and that's my concern, looking at your parking spaces.
Looks like your colleague has done the math.
Where would the visitors park?
I'm sorry?
Where would your visitors park?
It's, it's, this is a very good question, that we would have some street parking, and Andrew, I'm not sure if I'll throw any side questions to you as far as contemplated for guest stalls. If street parking is allowed along mechanical drive. And, and we'll also, just speaking to parking counts, I don't know if, if Richard, do you have any comments on parking?
Hey, good evening, Richard Adams with Kimley Horn. I don't have a lot of detailed information on the parking, but the, the required parking should cover visitors as well as residents, based on code requirements. My understanding is that parking is allowed on mechanical as of today. There were, there actually cars out there today parked on the street, so, or at least one. So that's just some additional information. Hope that's helpful.
No.
Conrad, you know, I think from a management standpoint, I think that that is something that you can stipulate this evening. Just from a management, talking with Paul Keenan from Reuter Walton, if that's something that you want to stipulate as a condition of approval, that, you know, there is no overnight guest parking. That vehicles need to be tagged, all those kinds of things, I think that we can make those as conditions of an approval.
And I think it's just one of the concerns that we've heard and we have to be wary of in some of the projects that we've, we've learned from history, that we've. We didn't accommodate visitor parking, and it becomes a public safety hazard later on, just enough parking to cover the residents. And then we'd have this incinerary, three or four parking spaces for visitors for ninety six units, and we quickly realized. And when you approve something like that wasn't realistic. When you say ninety six units, and like you said, two thirds of them are two and three bedroom units. We, realistically, you know that's not enough visitor spacing. So, and that's something I think we would have to look at as condition, ensuring that there is an appropriate working with staff, what would be an, a realistic, appropriate visitor parking spaces to be held on property. That's just one concern. My second question is, how many elevator units would you have for the building?
It's, it's a great question, I think with, we used to with a hydraulic elevator, always, you know, we would just have two in ninety six units. The general rule is with a hydraulic elevator, it will cover sixty seven apartments. But with new, non-hydraulic, you know, fast, faster elevators that, and I'm, why am I, why am I missing the words here, Ben? For elevators, you can usually get those now, they will serve one hundred apartments. So I think it depends on speed of elevator, it would be at the corner of the, of the L shaped building, so hydraulic two. But if we can go with high speed elevator, it would just be one.
Alrighty, thank you. And back to Ms. Bland's question, I did some research, the two thousand and twenty three adjusted HUD income limits, I think you'd be surprised. And I'm gonna get to your question, but I'm, I'm gonna give you the information to our neighbors to the north. In Nash, a one person unit is, the sixty percent is twenty nine, seven, sixty. Up to four is forty two, four, eighty, the income limit. In Wilson, one person is twenty nine, five, eighty. Four persons is forty two, two, forty. To our east, in Wayne, which is Goldsboro, MSA, is twenty nine thousand, one hundred. Four person is forty one thousand, five, twenty. And Harnett, to our west, is, one person is thirty one thousand, three, twenty. A four person is forty four, seven hundred. We're in the Raleigh, MSA, Johnston. So this is a true opportunity with marketing for true workforce housing. I think for Clayton, this is a true opportunity if it's marketed correctly by the developer. A one person in the Raleigh, MSA, which Johnston County is, annual income sixty percentile, it's forty seven thousand, six, forty. Four person residence is sixty seven thousand, nine, eighty. If this is marketed correctly, this is true workforce housing opportunity for the town of Clayton. And I think it's very surprising because we're in the Raleigh, MSA. So with the correct marketing, this is a force multiplier. For the town of Clayton and for when you, normally when you hear about teachers, police officers, firefighters, you blow smoke. That you see with the, the Nash, Edgecombe, Wilson, but for being that Johnston is in the Raleigh, MSA, this is truly a workforce housing opportunity. So it's all off the marketing, it's all about the leasing, who we let in, but I think this is a true opportunity.
Conrad, question for you, I believe I'm correct on this. Our code, if they were meeting codes, I don't think they're meeting code, but you can correct me on this. One bedroom. One-bedroom apartments require one parking space, two-bedroom require two parking spaces, three-bedroom require two parking spaces. Then each unit requires one um, one guest space for every four units. So I believe that's a hundred and eighty that this project would have to have.
Thank you. So I'm gonna zoom in right on this table right down here. So this, this has the, the breakdown of the one-bedroom, it was one stall and the one-point-two-five. And I want to say that this is with, this is in compliance with the UDO as far as-
That's not their recommendation, what they want. That is actually what the UDO says. So that's a change from the previous code. I did not realize we'd made that change.
With the reduction in parking from the prior code?
Okay.
I just double-checked this, and I can double-check on my screen, but wanna say it's the point-two-five is the guest stalls, and two and three-bedroom up is a one-point-two-five stalls per, per person, per, per unit, I should say. Let me move it just a little bit. I was just about to add up all the numbers on that column on the right, but I'm just gonna go with that says a hundred and thirty-five for the required and also what they're providing.
Yeah, parking's a concern for me, and also even though this seems to be a great located um project, it's not connected well with connectivity, walkable connectivity to the rest of the town. And um, there's no safe access across the highway. Um, there's really no safe pedestrian access back into downtown. So um, that's my two concerns, is safe pedestrian access and, and then just totally parking, because it doesn't appear, besides coming out on the road, that um, there's any overflow parking. And then um, I know that this cul-de-sac, I believe, is substandard to today's code, because aren't we requiring ninety-six-foot cul-de-sac bulbs, bulbs now?
For, for the right-of-way width there, I'd have to get that confirmed with in terms of the minimum requirements.
Yeah, I think that's what um the new code requires. So I'm just concerned about fire safety and what they would say on that road, and if there would be parking allowed long-term on that road due to those public safety questions. But that's my two major concerns.
The concerns I have are parking as well. Um, I don't think this is nearly enough parking spaces for who's gonna be living here. Um, we can put in stipulations of over, no overnight parking, but that doesn't mean anything once the building is built and people have guests. And you're right, there are people parking on the street now, and there's not ninety-six units there, and they're already parking on the street. I don't think this is gonna do anything but exacerbate that issue, so I think parking is not remotely adequate for this.
Chair, can I approach? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, and again, you know, I apologize that the folks from Reuters Walton could not be here tonight, but one of the things that they did say is, Link, go ahead and negotiate with the planning commission so that you feel comfortable with this project. And so we have a city, city council meeting here in a couple of weeks scheduled. If at that time they had a, an agreement for overnight parking with one of the adjacent businesses, would that, would that be satisfactory? Because we do meet the city code, as Conrad has expressed, and then we've got the, you know, per-code twenty-four additional guest stalls. So we've got one, one-for-one, two units, one-point-two-five, three, three-bedroom units, one-point-two-five. If we could convert those twenty-four units that we show as guests and convert those to just normal parking, and then have, you know, an overnight contract with one of the adjacent businesses, would that, would that satisfy the commission?
I think that would help, but that only works if the overnight guests know that somebody's got something worked out with the business.
It, it, right, it'd have to be signed, yeah.
But I mean, the guests that are coming have to know that the business down here is letting them park overnight.
Absolutely, and I think then that's, that's reliant upon the twenty-year track history that, that Reuters Walton has, uh, and their ability to manage these types of projects, um, and the track record that they've demonstrated. But I think if we could bring that back to your town council, I would hope that council or commission here would be satisfied with that.
One thing I'd like to point out there is that the housing units are permanent and the agreement's not permanent.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Can I actually ask a question of staff briefly?
Yes.
Conrad, for the commercial corridor, which is currently zoned, what are some of the challenges with getting a, a commercial business on this parcel?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Chair and important member Ralph White. So uh, the CRM, that zone district, we do have our Economic Development Director, Patrick Pierce here, that might be able to give some context into uh the question about the commercial viability of that. Um, so if, Patrick, on the-
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Um, I would say these lots have sat vacant for a while, don't have the exact timing. I think given that it's, you know, a major road to a secondary road to another secondary road in a cul-de-sac, you do limit the opportunities for commercial uses there and kind of limit to what it is your actual use case is for those, given that you're, um, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't want to give, I mean, have exact uses, but I assume that you're probably limited to maybe office or something back there because you don't have the traffic coming through that's gonna have the eyeballs and have that. I mean, there was the Ziggy's Coffee on the Cameron Way there, and Mechanical in Cameron, but again, that's pretty much right off of Shotwell there. You've got traffic coming through there. The visibility for back in the cul-de-sac is going to be pretty limited in terms of what someone in a retail context is going to look for. So I think you've got limited commercial opportunities on, and also given the size of the site, it's not a particularly large site. Um, so that would be my, my, my opinion of that in terms of what you'd be able to do with it.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I appreciate it. I was, I, I think it's worth noting that though we might have some concerns about parking, it is, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, a, a well-meaning project. I, I think if we can find a way to, whether it's for the developer or otherwise, other businesses to um increase the parking, um, that's certainly fine. That was actually my first thought before you mentioned it, was the concern that folks were gonna park um at the gym and um all the other businesses overnight. And then if they do decide they want to get a tow truck out there and start towing folks, that would be, become a problem later on. Um, but I'd be uh interested to, to hear what other opportunities there are to increase that parking as well.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Did you miss this or ask him?
Sorry. Can you, can you all explain that parking's not a big issue for me, but the buffer is? Can, since we're very, very close to those townhomes, can you give us a little more expansiveness on what the buffer's gonna be? And if you'd be, might be willing to do a little bit more on the buffer side as well? Because that's, that's actually my biggest concern about this project.
Uh, Andrew Plato, excuse me, Andrew Plato, Kimley Horn. Um, so uh, speaking specifically to the eastern buffer, to the townhomes, correct? Uh, I mean, our intention is to retain as much of that as possible. I believe by code, which we tried to follow, um, as much as we could, the high-density or um residential multifamily, I believe is the highest-density residential uh category for the zoning. So with that, uh, you can see there's a, it's very small, um, and I won't try to zoom in, but there's a ten-foot uh label there, uh, dimension, excuse me, which I believe is the setback, and the buffer is similar. So we're trying to keep that as far, uh, sorry, that face of the building is far away from the property line, and it's a little over thirty feet currently, um, mainly because we can't encroach further into the stream buffers that are bisecting the site going north-south there. So we've got that out to about thirty-one, thirty-two feet, and the intention is to retain as much of the existing buffer that we can, uh, pending design grades, once we get that far along in the process, um, and to bolster that further as much as we could uh due to kind of anticipated concerns with buffering to the townhome community.
So what are the, what's the height, what are the heights you think of the foliage that's gonna be out there when it's all said and done? I mean, do you guys have a view of what it would look like from the back of those townhomes, what they would be seeing?
We don't have, no, we don't have any renders of that currently, and I'm not sure what the height of those existing trees are. Um, you know, it's certainly something that we could determine in the future, but I don't believe we have that information on survey or any information currently.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that's my biggest concern. The only, the only one thing I wanted to, want to say about the parking is that the two last parking spaces in the garage are basically meaningless, so you actually aren't meeting the requirement. Those last two parking spaces you can never get to in the garage. There's no turnaround in there.
Chair, uh, and I don't disagree with you. I think that we've got enough. Um, let's see, I can go to the next couple of slides here. Let's see, don't want to add text. Yeah, Conrad, if you could just advance it to the floor plan. I do agree with you, and I think that the common areas that we show are just kind of goes through the previous right there. Those yellow common areas, those are somewhat amorphous boxes. And I do think that that pink line that you see between gray and, and yellow there can get shifted over so that those last two stalls are um usable. So thank you for mentioning that.
If I may just respond. Um, and Conrad mentioned this, these plans are still at a conceptual enough level that we do have a couple of different conditions that express that, um, you know, we will make sure that we are meeting code requirements um on, on a few things when we actually get to the site in construction plan phase. So um, I think it's uh, it's something we can easily add to those conditions, is that things like um access turning movements in the parking garage and the rest of the site for that matter will be um designed to meet code and alleviate those type of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gleason?
I actually have a question about the, the traffic. Um, I know it says here in our report that there wasn't enough to warrant a TIA. Um, has the town of Clayton, I guess Conrad, done anything to analyze traffic volumes on Shotwell? I know, you know, Cameron Way trying to turn left onto Shotwell, especially at the peak hours, is sometimes impossible to do quite a while. And then some of the effects of that, you have a lot of people go down Enterprise Drive that turn right onto US seventy through Biscuitville. You have people that cut through Bojangles to get on seventy business to go out to Garner, um, as well as the gas station that's right there. And then kind of another concern of how is this gonna affect, you know, daycare pickup during the peak hours as well with the NEST school being right there? So I guess like the nature of my question is, is if it doesn't involve a TIA, has there been any analysis done to check what traffic would be or how it would be effective negatively to not impede any of the neighborhoods and the other businesses?
Thank you, Member Gleason. Um, so for a part of this project, an, an analysis of that overall area has not been done um with this particular um project. Um, something like that might be done with our comprehensive transportation plan. So we don't have that kind of more broader um analysis.
All right, if there are no more questions for staff? All right, thank you. We're now opening it up for public comments. If there's a member of the public that would like to speak, please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address. Is there any member of the public would like to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am, in the gray sweatshirts first, and the lady in the red uh scrubs.
Chair Moore, if I may, was there a time limit you would like to have public comments for?
Uh, please limit your public comments to three minutes, um, for everyone, three minutes. The planning director will keep a timer, and it'll, I think it'll ding or buzz.
Yeah, give a ding.
Yes. Yes, ma'am, please speak loudly, and you can adjust the microphone if you want, and uh state your name and your, your local address, numerical, your numerics first, then your street name.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Deja Stevens. I live at one-twenty-five Enterprise Drive. Uh, so right there where the, um, that divide is, where you guys are talking about the, the building being built. Um, so I'm a young, you know, female. I worked really hard for my home. It's my first home. Um, first to go to college, first to buy a home at the age of twenty-five. I'm very proud of that. Um, and I worry about my safety. I'm gonna be honest. This is bringing a different culture to the neighborhood, um, which could be loaded, right? That's a loaded statement, and I understand that. Um, but this does make me nervous. Um, being a young female, I, it, it's something to be real about. Also, my backyard already doesn't get a lot of sunlight, so building a large structure at that uh is gonna limit that. Uh, so that's something that I do have problems with. And then the uh, the parking and the traffic there, there's been several accidents that have occurred right there at that intersection of Ziggy's and La Cina. So there's a lot of people who try to turn out of those restaurants and those businesses, and the fire department comes and they have to, they have trouble. I've seen them parking on those streets. Um, and it's a, it's a mess. We have semi-trucks that park on the streets at night. Um, it's really uh difficult to even turn out, to go um and turn onto seventy or to go down Shotwell. I have family that's local who live in Riverwood, um, so getting to them, which you would think would be very short drive, is, is a headache in itself. So I'm just worried about um logistically how this will enact. That's a small property, in my opinion, two-point-nine acres, isn't that big, to put a lot of people on. Um, so it makes me nervous about, you know, just the environmental standards of that, um, the trash. Who's gonna keep up with that? Who's gonna make sure that the property stays clean? Our HOA does a great job right now for the Cameron Crossing neighborhood to pick up the trash. Are they gonna now take on that for that subdivision or that apartment complex to make sure that stays clean um and not get litter in my backyard? Um, so the, these are just some of the issues that I have, uh, but I would like to just say, first and foremost, my safety um is the thing that I have the most concern about, um, being a small female uh on around. So yes, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes.
Hello, um, my name is Megan Woods. I live at two-ten Enterprise Drive. Um, I have a lot of different things that I feel like I could mention, and some of them have already been mentioned by you all. Um, but I think, I, I'm really glad that there was a lot of discussion today about parking because I think it is going to be one of the biggest issues, um, that and traffic. So those are the two big things I wanted to talk about. One thing that I think you all might not know from just not necessarily living in this particular area is that Cameron Way is crazy during certain times of the day because people who go to Clayton Fitness, for some reason, don't like to park in Clayton Fitness's parking lot. They like to park on the street, uh, right in front of it. I don't know why. But it is, usually there's parking on both sides of the street, and people don't always like to park correctly. So oftentimes that makes Cameron Way a one-way street because somebody has to pull off to the side to be able to actually go the other direction past them. There are also a lot of semi-trucks that park on that same street overnight and through the day um because they're staying in that hotel, I think, off uh the Comfort Suites that's also right there. And that's sort of a, a big issue. Um, so that street is already very, very congested. Not to mention, it's the, really the only realistic way in and out of that neighborhood because the only other way you can get out is to go straight down Enterprise, and that only works if you're trying to go up towards Garner. So if we want to get to like downtown, we have to go all the way out that way and go all the way around. I found a Facebook post, because I did a lot of research on all of this, because I was really, that's the kind of person that I am. But anyway, so I found a Facebook post from twenty-nineteen showing that Blakely Street was actually originally planned to be connected to the streets in downtown, and for some reason it wasn't. I don't know why. But the fact that none of these streets connect in this neighborhood, and the fact that they're planning on putting all of these commercial things in here are, it's making the getting in and out of Shotwell very difficult because I don't think it was necessarily the best design plan to only make one very small street. Also, on Cameron Way, there is not any real signage about parking. Um, it's kind of a free-for-all. So I think one thing that if you wanted to try to do something that might help would be to put actual- actual parking spaces, like lines where people are supposed to park, putting signs up to not let people park all the way to the edge. Because I pull, I went to this part of, I, I drove down the street, went in the cul-de-sac and actually looked at it the other day. And when I was coming back out, the cars are parked so close to the edge of the, where the, the road is, like to the corner, that you couldn't see around them. So I can definitely see why there are accidents that happen all the time.
Ma'am, thank you.
Oh, I'm done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You're next, sir.
Can I get the map pulled up, the overview map, please? Hey, my name's Paul McKenzie. I live at 214 Enterprise Drive. Actually, me and Megan are, we're neighbors. And everything that she's saying I agree with, and I'm glad you guys touched on the parking spaces because if you just think, you said 432 daily trips, I believe, it's gonna influx by, well, that's, we have two roads. That's, it just won't happen. And now, are you guys from, are you guys from around here? Are you all from Charlotte developer?
Sir, talk to the board, please.
Are they, are they from Char, are they from here or are they from Charlotte?
Sir, please talk to the board.
I'm talking to the board right now.
Okay.
Because I just don't think they understand, just like Megan was saying, how dangerous, and we got tons of kids in our neighborhood too. And you're talking about bringing a low-income housing in here, and you get all low hit, a low-income housing riffraff. We all know what's going on in Durham. We hear about it on the news. I know I do, I listen to the news. And a lot of that is due to all of the low-income housing that they built. It all started. The traffic is probably the biggest issue for us who leave the neighborhood to go to work, to go get groceries, all that whatnot. And if you have 96 units and you just say, okay, that's an average of 1.5 cars per unit, you're looking at what? That's 96, 48, 130, 146 vehicles? Addition, 432 extra drives? It can't handle that. You have a two-lane road of Shotwell that can barely handle the traffic that it has right now. I mean, I work on Main Street, and to get to my neighborhood, it took 15 minutes to get there. And this is at four o'clock in the afternoon. Five o'clock in the afternoon, it's even worse. This is only going to make things worse. That's only gonna make things worse for the members of the community that already live there. It's just an additional headache to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Adams. I live at 157 Enterprise Drive. I just want to thank the council for considering and bringing up a lot of these concerns. I really do appreciate it. I'm sure many of the other residents do as well. As far as the current condition of the parking, I'm gonna try not to reiterate too much that's already been said, but as far as the current parking situation, these businesses already see a big overflow of parking and people parking overnight already. And if you are to drive down that road, even when these businesses are closed, you'll find lots of people leaving their cars there overnight. So I think parking is an even bigger concern than what's been laid out already, considering this is gonna be 96 units. You're talking about a minimum like 1.2 cars a person. That's going to be a lot, plus the visitors, plus what's already there, plus visitors already coming into our neighborhood who have a little trouble finding parking. So we're talking about a big overflow. I also never heard any discussion about, which was brought up in the PDF of their application about the wetland area back there, if there's any, been any investigation into any permits needed for that from the Division of Water Resources or the Division of Environmental Quality, the NC Division of Environmental Quality. And while I understand we certainly want more people coming to Clayton, I think there could and should be lots of other opportunities outside of this zoning, which is already available for commercial use. And to say that it's not being used for commercial use right now and would not serve well because of its location, I think it's unfair because currently Ziggy's is performing very well, so much that we're seeing additional parking over there. And one last note I want to add real quick about the gym parking. They also have many events over there. They have strength competitions. They just recently had a wrestling event and parking overflowed massively. So if you're gonna put a residency there, you've got to also consider all these businesses which also have events, and there's no good subsequent parking there, or frankly, any way to have a lot of these new residents be able to comfortably travel around the area or into downtown. As you mentioned, no adequate sidewalks, no adequate public transportation. So you're talking about a very limited window. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you bringing all this to question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. Robbie Badger, 145 Enterprise Drive. Before I start, can we get the diagram up that shows the lot numbers, please? The one that's got the, I'm not sure if it was the slide before or after, but it's got the numbers for each lot. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So I cur, I live in lot number 13. If you look at the diagram, I'm kind of smack dab right in the middle of this project. I want to talk about really quick the, the buffer or the barrier that was previously mentioned by the builder. I know they said they weren't going to be touching trees. They were gonna leave that alone as much as possible. I can tell you right now, just by simply living there, even with trees there, I am only 10 steps from that property. 10 steps, I'm on the actual property. I don't have to jump through trees, limbs. I don't have to duck. It's just a straight shot even with trees there. So it's very accessible to, to that property. It would be very accessible to my backyard. So I'm very concerned about the buffer. I'm very concerned with people trespassing onto our backyards. I also want to just briefly talk about the parking again. I agree with everything that everyone said previously up here. We have our own homeowners association with very strict parking rules. With the overflow of people in this proposed project, you're going to probably get cars just flooding our streets with no consequences. We will probably see people breaking our own homeowners rules, but nothing can be done because they just simply do not live in our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the proximity of the daycare center off to the corner. I don't want to sound unsettling, but when you use the term low-income housing, the world we live in right now, that's a very sensitive term that people are gonna probably be low-key prejudiced against. Even, even businesses. You, you get a low-income project in close proximity to your house, your insurance rates are gonna go up. It shouldn't be that way, but that's, that's the nature of what it could be. I'm also very concerned with resale value of our homes. Many of us in that neighborhood are not renters. We own our homes. So I'm very concerned about the resale value and what this could possibly do. I'm also concerned about fire hazards, since this is going to be a full, full apartment complex with, like they said, gyms, fire, fireplaces and grills and everything, that's gonna just create additional fire hazards for our neighborhood. And I'm also very concerned about just, like I said, the parking is probably the biggest thing right now. I'm also just very concerned with just so many HOA rules being broken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this issue? Thank you. We're in nine. I will turn it over to the planning board for their consideration. Are there any, any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Sir, Mr. Williams?
I've been on the board for three years now, and this is the first project that's come through that I've been really hoping for. And so the low income doesn't mean that people are bad people. It's just people not making more than minimum wage. They deserve an opportunity to have a home for their families, just like everyone else. So if that's a concern, then, you know, so the way that I look at it is, the people working at Grifols that's doing janitor work, you know, people that are at Food Line, at the cashiers, they need an opportunity to have a home. And so I don't think that we should put low income in this project with bad people. And I know the town of Clayton has been doing a lot of other projects just tying into this. So you have all of the responses stuff that you guys were speaking of. I think that we did one project where there's gonna be a cut-through that goes from 70 all the way to Main Street of Enterprise, right? And I definitely, I go to La Cina a lot, so I know the parking and the gym and all that, so my recommendation for builders is to work with our staff to make sure that parking and traffic concerns are taken care of. But this community, Clayton, this is a great town, and I'm hoping that the only people that are going into those homes are people that work in Clayton, have a place to live in Clayton, and all of us, you know, live together. So the other recommendations, make sure that when we're working that you're Clayton residents, right? Or you're working in Clayton to be able to fill out applications, things like that. So if I need to volunteer my time to be a part of that, I'll do that as well. But I definitely do not want to not have this opportunity because of parking or traffic or concerns of safety. Our police department is, you know, very, they're everywhere, right? If we need to do something with, working with them as well, I think that that'd be a great opportunity for you guys, you know, to partner with them and show them your concerns. I definitely, you know, understand that HOA, you know, work with them. Say, hey, people parking, what can we do? Maybe we can do something where they will have to tow the car or do something, but I just wanted to put that out there that that's the only thing that really, out of all of this, this is necessary. It's necessary for people in our community to have their own homes, just like you guys have your own homes as well.
Any other comments, Mr. Gleason?
Yes. If this were to get approved and go through the proper procedures, could we make it, could I make a recommendation for the developer to work with the adjacent property owners to possibly build privacy fences that meets your guys' HOA regulations? That'd just be a recommendation of knowing my experience, so.
I believe that would be a condition that would have to be agreed upon by the applicant. If they want to comment on that, except they're nodding their head, so that would seem something they'd be wanting to do. Yeah, I think even along those lines, concern about the buffer, it, it looks here, then obviously I know we're not there yet on site plan specifics, that it's a planted buffer to accommodate what looks to be the trail or something that's going around the development. Yeah, I think that that is also needed. I like trails in communities as well. But if it could be just remain a natural buffer, that may be helpful as well. That way you don't have to rip out things and if you have others, other things added on the buffer.
Well, I was, I was, if I can add to what Chris Chappellway was saying, it's, it'd be great at the next step to see the views. As I mentioned earlier, the view from the back of the homes, the end of view from the building to the home as well. It's gotta be both view sheds. Need to be seen and make sure that those are buffered, because I, putting in a buffer doesn't mean it's gonna meet the height requirements that is necessary to really screen as it needs to be.
And also, like I said, I did some due diligence on the research, and we have to remember, we're not talking about public housing and the 60% tax credit. The tax credits do go to as low as 30%. So let's be clear, this is, there's a lot lower income tax credits. We're at 60%, and we're talking in the Raleigh MSA, as I stated, for one person, it's at 47 income level, 47, 640. For a family of three, it's 61,200. And I don't think most people would consider for a single person 47,640 as low income. So it's really about how the property is managed. And I think it's about holding, holding the town of Clayton, working with the develop, well, not the developers, but whoever the developers decide and whoever builds it, the management company, as you, as you know, the management company who's managing the property, who they're list, they're, who they're leasing it to. So I think that's the key. So when you're looking at, let's say, 48,000 for the six percentile, the income can go as high as 48,000 basically for a single person, I think that's an opportunity for some young professionals, even college graduates coming out to live there. I think that is an opportunity. So it's really working on, ideally on the marketing of that facility. So it's not like, as I stated, to our neighbors to the north, where it's the maximum income for one person is 30,000, we're talking about next month, college graduates graduating and, and a lot of college graduates graduating, whether we like it or not, are not going to make $48,000 in their first couple of years. So this is an opportunity for somebody starting out to live there. But it's all about whoever purchased those tax credits, who they hire as the leasing company. If they want to lease it to people making 25,000, that's fine. You get what you get. But if they want to lease it to people making $45,000, you get a higher quality applicant, I mean tenant. So there's some opportunities here, and I think there's some great opportunities here for some true workforce housing. And I, and I'm looking for the opportunities. I see opportunities here for some young, young individuals to come back home to Clayton to live. I see opportunities, and that's the way I'm looking at it. Now, the parking, I've been on the board for five years, and I've been sounding this siren by myself. So, and I'm gonna say it again, I've sounded, if any, if any other planning board members tonight vote against this for parking, it's never happened before. I'm gonna say it tonight. If they, if they decide to vote against this for parking, it's never happened before. I've solely voted against projects for parking by myself, many occasions. So I'll be surprised if the reason for any other planning board member to deny this tonight is for parking. I've been a, I've been singing solo. I've left the band and sung solo, and I think some other planning board members can attest to that. So I've been beating this dead dog by myself, but I think we can request for them to work on, find a way. I don't know if there's any other land they can buy. I do know that, let's say, the, the Hispanic restaurant, obviously, they must have some type of agreement with the daycare for parking because on any, any given night, their overflow is at the daycare for parking, if you go there, if you've ever visited there. Their workers park over there, their staff, because they have to go over there and clean up before the week, over the weekend because of the trash. So I do, I think you can get some type of agreements. I don't know if there's any land left, or you can incorporate, as you know, compact car parking in certain areas and squeeze in some parking for compact cars in a given area and enforce that, have heavy parking enforced for compact cars in certain areas, which free, which increases your parking in a given area for compact cars and frees it up for larger truck parking in another area. I've seen creative parking like that in lots. So there are some opportunities, but just having 135 parking spaces, it's not gonna work. I can't vote for it just for parking for residents. It, so my recommendation is the condition of, but I need staff to give us some guidance. Is it 25 guest parking spaces, 20? What would, what would be a good, because I think we have to put a number in there. If I'm, if I'm gonna add a condition, or, or some, one of our, whoever's gonna bring up the motion, I think a number would be appropriate, right? Just to say, a condition of adding guest parking, I think is not sufficient.
Chair, Chair Moore, if I may, so.
Chair, Chair Moore, if I may, so it might be a condition to request the applicant to consider some sort of reciprocal parking act agreement with neighboring properties, that what, that's what I'm hearing. Um, that sounds like the, I'm hearing the, seeing the applicant nodding to that, that. The timing of when that's enacted, if that's a condition, would need to be, um, I'm not sure what the timing of that might be, if it's gonna be, be able to be acquired before it goes to town council or if it's just a commitment that they will act it, or if it's a requirement that it be obtained. Um, but it's requiring a commitment from a third party that's not here tonight, but it's something that you can request. That, that's a possibility that TRC site plan be approved, um, with the fulfillment of that kind of reciprocal agreement. Um, that's something though, that the applicant would need to agree to. Go ahead. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Dupree, I agree with you that building permit would not be granted until, uh, written contract with an adjacent neighbor is, uh, solidified. Uh, I, I think that that's, that's, um, very reasonable for, for your commission to ask of Reuter Walton.
And a privacy fence.
Right, we have privacy fence, so a landscape buffer, uh, I think, um, yeah, well, I, I think it's, it's whatever the, uh, I think you have a six foot height limit. But you know, maybe, but it may, I think it says that you, you need a permit for anything over six feet. So we, again, we would work with staff and the building inspector to, um, to get that, uh, in place. But I think all of your conditions are reasonable this evening. We'll work to, uh, make those happen for you.
Mr. Chair, I think one thing, uh, in the event that they can't secure the agreement with adjacent business owners, that there be another means that they can add parking as well onto that condition. Um, I guess there's a situation where the neighboring business owners don't want to offer that parking and I don't want the project to be held up later on in the process if that doesn't happen. Um, so if there's another mechanism to get the parking, whether it's through, um, conversations with the town, you know, striping, uh, mechanical drive in a way that allows more parking, um, more, something more orderly than what's currently available.
Right, I, um, I appreciate that, Commissioner Applewhite. Um, I think we could put a 90-day stipulation on it. Uh, you know, what I've normally seen, if you can't get that done in 90 days, you're not gonna get it done. I think Reuter Walton is, is very much motivated to do so. And I think that they would also make a contribution to, um, signage along Cameron and, uh, you know, paint striping, obviously you gotta work with city engineer and city staff, but I think a contribution to that so that, uh, we can clarify future parking, uh, and just drives on, on Cameron Way. I think a contribution is, is in order.
So, I, I just wanna help, uh, whoever's gonna make the motion. So we got the, we got the privacy fence, we got the agreement with parking. I don't think.
Well, you know, talk with the residents to make sure parking in their areas, their concerns. That's one thing that he said there.
Okay. Okay. Uh, consult with their, what's the name of that neighborhood?
Are you back to him?
Yes, ma'am.
So the young lady who spoke first, um, she was, she was very, uh, on point about safety. And depending on how far away we put this parking, we want to make certain it is adjacent. We don't want parking at La Casino walking all the way back there. But there are gonna be teenagers living there, there are gonna be single people living there, they're gonna be coming in, they're gonna work shifts, they're gonna come in late, they're gonna have to walk from La Casino back there. So please, if we could, make certain adjacent and not two blocks down the road.
Okay.
And, and to that point, Mr. Chair, I don't want us to be overly burdensome in our conditions. I think it's appropriate for the board to make these considerations, but I do think, uh, it's incumbent on, on town staff and the developers to think about a more orderly process for this area. Cause I, as someone who frequents Bojangles in this area and La Casino and the others, um, it is a frustrating area to drive through and I, I could imagine that it would be aggravating around 5 o'clock or in the morning. Um, so I think if we pay a little bit more attention to, to this area, given the development that will be coming, there, there could be some benefit in town staff looking, looking at that, including folks that, um, uh, truck drivers parking on Cameron Way, I, I think that they've done, uh, had similar conversations about Moore Street, um, having truck, heavy trucks driving down there. Um, I, I don't wanna, uh, cause issue for those folks, but I also think it's becoming a problem, we need to do something about it. So I would just encourage town staff to, to look into that further.
Yeah, it's probably against town audits for the old street parking of trucks, semis anyways. But it's like they said, it's probably they're staying at that motel. Yeah, ma'am, what's, sir, what's the name of your neighborhood?
Cameron Cross.
Cameron Cross, thank you.
I have another comment for comrade, or, um, so for the town, uh, in the comprehensive plan, um, the lady in the red back there mentioned that Bleakley Street was gonna be connected at some point. And I can confirm that it is in the comprehensive plan for the town of Clayton. Can we make it, or I guess I have two, two questions here. So with the development that's going in now where Popeyes is, between Fit for Life and Biscuitville, is there any sort of connection to, um, Bleakley Street that's going along with that? It is, okay. And then as a part of that, are they going to extend the 500 feet that's needed? Is there a way that we can put a condition to say that if this property is built, the town allocate funds within, say, three years to finish that connection?
So the, to condition the town to, to agree, I, I'm, I'm gonna be able to make that a commitment, um, on behalf of the town, um, if it's something that, that the, are you referencing the Summit Street that connects from North Enterprise Drive?
I'm referencing Atkinson Street, um, where it connects with South Moore Street. And so there's 500 feet of woodlands that are behind the Fit for Life building that would then connect to Bleakley Street, so that would offer that extra connection that is not as busy as Shotwell is currently. So that would allow at least the residents in the area and the other traffic to the businesses that are eventually now coming, uh, to then turn right onto South Moore Street and then have the access to the signal to save any business.
I see, the area that you're referring to, I'm, I'm unaware of any development occurring on that site and that's something that we would encounter, um, when that site was to be developed, about connecting Atkinson through the woods there and into Bleakley. I don't see any right of way dedicated currently for that. So that will be a matter of, of working with the, with the developer when that property comes up for redevelopment. And if I may, Chair Moore, there was a question that's been on my mind in the beginning with, uh, Board Member Saraski about the height, um, the height for CRM right now is 30 foot, I'm sorry, 60 foot in height. So it's a comparable height, um, the setback for the rear would be 30 foot and then I'm gonna say a 15 foot side here, setback for a commercial development on the site.
All right. Any other comments for deliberation from the planning board? Mr. Amito, for, in case there is a motion, could you pull back your recommended, uh? Thank you. If there are no further comments, I'll turn it over to, to the board for a motion to recommend or not recommend 2024-24 CVM Shotwell Apartments to the Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to state that I'm gonna be voting against this recommendation. I feel like this is, um, too intense of a use for the property. I feel like it appears, and I haven't got a scale, but it appears like some of the parking is over 400 foot away. I'm not including the route you have to take to get to your apartment, um, once you get inside the building. And, um, I just have an issue with the intensity for this site considering all of the, um, environmental features and, um, the layout of the site itself.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Liskum. Any other comments or motion to recommend or not recommend? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bland?
I don't think anyone in this room wants to see affordable housing more than I do in this market. We've talked a lot about it. Um, we need it. But we've got a lot of concerns here, a lot of concerns. And I agree, I agree with Board Member Lipscomb, it is, um, we're asking a lot for a small space.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, um, this project inconsistent with the future land use map. I make a motion to approve this rezoning request while it's inconsistent with the future land use map in the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan and that the property is identified as identity residential. And the use map goal LU1 seeks to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Strategy LU 1.1.2 looks to support residential development in varying densities based on the future land use map associated character descriptions and other relevant plans. Goal LU3 encourage a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, sa, sizes and ages. Goal LU4 provides safe, sound and well-maintained housing in neighborhoods. And the future land use map will be updated consistent with this rezoning request to an appropriate corresponding land use category per NC Journal statutes 160D 605A. Uh, this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that it, the comprehensive land use growth plan encourages residential uses in this area and is compatible with existing zoning, um, and will add the, um, other conditions requested by the board.
You have a motion by Board Member Applewhite? Is there a second?
A second.
You have a second by Board Member Williams? We discussed conditions, are there any conditions, would you like to add Board Member Applewhite or Board Member Williams? To his?
Not any further than what we've already discussed.
Yeah, not that specific, just, uh, what we discussed that, you know, you guys worked together to make sure that you're, the parking and the, uh, fencing and stuff is included in that.
Before we move forward to vote, what I wrote down was a six foot privacy fence. And I'm just throwing this out for you, for one and two of you to add for amendment to your motion. Six foot privacy fence, an agreement with the adjacent business owners for parking and for the applicant to consult with the Cameron and Crossing Homeowners Association in regards to ensuring that the residents and/or the visitors do not park in their, uh, community.
Mr. Chair, I amend the motion to include, um, the condition for privacy fence, um, to secure, uh, negotia, or, uh, secure contracts with local businesses to, for parking. And, um, I'll add the, uh, consideration of a natural buffer in between the property owners and the site. Um, I think, does that cover it? I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to add the condition on negotiating with the HOA. Um, I think that's incumbent on the town and staff to continue to work with, in this area to understand what the needs are. And I don't think this needs to, uh, be considered as part of this.
Are you meaningful to that, Board Member Williams, so give a second?
Um, I want to add the condition that the developers, I look to see about the, working with the town with the parking, striping and, uh, signs, um, along the entryway. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the homeowner's part, I just want to make sure that parking is taken care of.
Meaningful to that, yes, sir. That's a second, okay, we have the motion and the second. All in favor, I think we need to do a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. All, so voting, uh, your vote for yay would be in favor of this motion. Um, Chair Moore?
Yay.
Vice Chair Dupree?
No.
Board Member Bland? Board Member Gleason?
No.
Board Member Lee? Board Member Lipscomb? Board Member Williams? Board Member Saraski? Board Member Applewhite?
Yes.
Chair, I have four votes in favor of the motion and does not pass.
Thank you.
We'll be, we'll need another motion for entertainment, and I can pull that up if you like, sir.
Okay.
I apologize, Board Member, I don't, I do not have that list, but there are four options. The first one is recommend approval consistent with the future land use map. The second one is approval inconsistent with the future land use map. The third is denial, consistent with the future land use map, denial inconsistent with the future land use map.
Okay.
So that, that motion did not pass, sir.
The, the motion before the board, i- in the, the way we voted would be, um, motion for, motion for denial inconsistent with the future land use map. That, considering was inconsistent a moment ago.
Correct, yeah, that would be advisable, um, inconsistent with the future land use map and recommendation for denial.
So that would be considered recommendation for denial, or do we need another motion?
I believe.
The motion fails.
The motion, the motion, the, I guess my question to you, Chair, is would you like to have another vote with a, with a, with a, uh, with a favorable vote, either in approval or denial?
Mr. Chair, I, I would recommend to the board that we need to provide a recommendation to Town Council, whether it's to be, um, for denial or for approval. So there would, I would add, I think the board probably needs to put forward a, a motion regardless of whether we want to approve or deny it.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll help me through this, make sure it sounds appropriate. Um, I would like to move that we recommend denial of the project, that it's inconsistent with the future land use map and particularly with the, um, physical and environmental constraints of this property considering the small acreage and the large number of units per acre that, um, we do not feel is appropriate for the site.
We have a motion for denial by Board Member Liskum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gleason. Want to do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir, this is in vote for in favor of that motion of denial. Uh, Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Chair Moore?
Nay.
Chair Dupree, I'm Vice Chair Dupree?
Yay.
Board Member Bland? Board Member Gleason?
Yay.
Board Member Lee?
Yeah.
Board Member Lipscomb?
Yeah.
Board Member Williams?
Yay.
To confirm, this is a, and okay, and Board Member Saraski?
No.
Board Member Applewhite?
No.
So that is one, two, three. Six votes in favor, so the motion does pass.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is in downtown master plan update.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I can help you out.
Been in almost tax credits, see other than personally who bought them. Oh, okay. Oh, it's two sheets. No, he's got one. No, I got two, okay.
Thanks, sir.
But I think they sold $10 million of tax credits to John, then wait until whoever bought all those tax credits. Well, you're talking about the 60 percentile, then you're talking about $48 million, $48,000 for Ryan. Yeah, I was, I was thinking no one told me until I looked at.
All right, Mr. Chair, are we ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director again. As you know, we've been working with the Planning Department and others in the Downtown Development Advisory Board on the downtown master plan. I know you were all able to see some of the opportunity sites at a previous meeting, as was the Downtown Advisory Board, since they thought it would be helpful to provide a letter to council and also to you all to be able to just kind of their initial impressions of what they saw in those opportunity sites, just to keep a dialogue going as this process moves forward. I will not read it to you, but maybe just point out some pieces here. And really, I think the point of this is, again, to keep a dialogue going between the advisory boards because downtown master plan, probably the boards that are two most impacted by that and their work are this board and the downtown advisory board. So what they really looked at is this, their takeaways from the board's letter was really creating that balance between growth and charm and prioritizing the value of the community, its residents and business owners as they grow. They looked at also restoring historical properties and continuing to encourage adaptive reuse and restoration efforts, parking and infrastructure, specific on infrastructure with streetscape, utility pole relocation, stormwater, and strong emphasis on those in the shorter term. Kind of some of the key areas that they put here were parking, really emphasizing parking in the railroad or secondary off-street solutions ahead of moving forward with, say, a large parking structure. If so, they'd like that to be, if it's in the core, which they really define as kind of main street from church to the community garden, keeping that in the current scale, which is two and three stories, or using other either side streets or places like the railroad corridor or Second Street for any sort of larger or the greater downtown area for larger structures, which would be up to six stories. Density, they use the term, is kind of been using around kind of convex versus concave. Their support was really on the idea of a kind of a concave approach. How do you maintain the character of the core of downtown, but also get the density, which the economic analysis and really, you know, the downtown's going to need to thrive? So how do you keep that core there along that main street area, but also but build density around it? So you preserve the historic downtown where the core businesses, you provide other opportunities with it, somewhere of a concave versus a convex approach, which is what you see in a lot of downtown areas where the very center of it grows up, everything grows up kind of and down. They're suggesting kind of more of a ring around that as a concept to be able to get the density, but also maintain the historic character of downtown Clayton. See, similar to that, you know, everything, you know, a lot of the existing commercial door, the commercial core focused on retail, food and beverage, and professional services, using, I guess, the other places in the greater downtown area just outside of there for mixed use. You know, commonly commercial on the bottom with, you know, higher density residential on top or office or parking on the remaining levels off of the ground for commercial. And then they just, and speaking of the opportunity areas, they wanted to point out, I guess, a couple others that were not kind of included or wanted to emphasize, which were continuing the relationship with the railroad to utilize that corridor both for parking, but also just opportunities for making it aesthetically pleasing throughout the corridor, as well as continuing integration there on West End and connectivity there. And also looking at kind of the downtown, the block from Lombard, I guess, east towards 70, even on Second Street, the rail rail corridors, opportunities to be able to find additional density, better utilize some of the parking lots there. I think they, here in the letter, pointed out the one there from the Barber Building and kind of all of those back there along those buildings. There's an opportunity probably, in their opinion here, as we talk, to better utilize the dirt parking lots there and provide potentially either parking or either surface or even structured parking there that would serve the businesses on Main Street and Second Street better, rather than the dirt parking is now, which is, has many owners across it, but a collective effort there could probably used to better serve the downtown area. So that's my brief summary of the two-page letter. Would love to, if there's other opportunities for these two boards to engage as this continues to go on. I think the goal is now to really push forward over the next three to four months to move that plan to council to adoption. So now's the time to have these conversations. Now's the time for us to be dialoguing and making sure that we have a plan that is successful moving forward and is something that is a plan that we're all working towards together as we look to grow downtown, not a, not a plan that goes on a shelf. So that's always what we want to do. So that's the point of the dialogue, that's the point of the letter, and look forward to working with you all. If you have questions, I'm happy to, I don't speak for the board, but I guess as your Economic Development Director, I'm happy to answer any questions relevant to this.
Where's the Barber Building?
The Barber Building would be there at Lombard and Main Street. So Cropper Cook Shop, Little Ombre, the Cardinal.
Oh, okay. Okay, I got you.
All right. Cool. I dig it, too.
Yeah, to follow up, not to totally disagree. I think we are going to miss an opportunity along Main Street to really double down, you know, on the opportunity that Main Street provides. I guess I'm having trouble thinking about where density is going to go. You know, even in the downtown support areas, there's a lot of existing single-family residential, even in opportunities on the west side, Moore Street, as I mentioned earlier, that's what I'm most familiar with. I think there's some opportunities there, but I just don't know where else. Is it going to be on Front Street? Is it going to be on the other side of town or further down 70, near Vincent's? I just don't know where else we put the density, if it's not going to be focused around, around Main Street.
So I think the idea was not all of Main Street, but really to focus kind of that, if you will, take it from, say, church to the community garden was kind of a rough, so that is kind of that core there. But there could be opportunities, as discussed and kind of shown by the consultant, you know, supportive of maybe those opportunities there back behind where HGR is. I think they use the lot there currently owned by, like, Jerry Dew was another one of the opportunity sites.
Yeah, the ones that they had mentioned to us in the previous.
So there's many of those that I think feed into that idea, where you could keep the character on Main Street in that core, but be one street off or a little bit farther out. Even if you look at some of the, you know, where you see probably some other gaps to land or maybe not, you know, you know, highest and best use, take it from Moore Street to, say, Smith or even to Central. There's probably opportunities in there. You know, there's definitely, not, I guess explicitly stated, what had been a lot of conversation was, you know, preserving also the historic neighborhood, so making sure that what's identified there, I think currently in the future land use map, you know, there could be future adjustments essentially, but what is that downtown neighborhood? Preserving that as some of the historic neighborhood areas, but finding areas that are currently in the support areas and some of those that could handle more growth and more density along the way. And then thinking of that downtown core, you know, kind of keeping, keeping that very small bit of Main Street there, but then being able to build around it and have some of that more dense growth around there that would feed into that.
Yeah, because I think that's, that's ideal, right? I just want to make sure that there's plenty of foot traffic to frequent businesses downtown and beyond. And I'm worried if it's, if our support area extends too far away from Main Street, then you have folks that are just going to get in their car and go to 70 or go to Garner, wherever else, and rather than staying in downtown. So that's why I mentioned that. One other question, if I can, is the consultant going to provide any rough estimates on density recommendations? Or they are, they, because if I recall correctly, during the UDO rewrite, there was some waiting around on this plan before we incorporated final decisions into the density of downtown, perhaps? Or are there going to be any changes in the UDO based on this?
So I'll speak to the density. The economic analysis changed the same. In density standpoint, from a density standpoint, it found that the greater downtown area could absorb 500 to 100 residential units per year over the next decade. So in rough terms, if you think of, so that's 500 to 1,000 units, depending on kind of where the growth trajectory goes. If you think of that in terms of the spinning mill, for example, is, you know, a new project that's roughly 250 units. So how and where do you put two to four spinning mills over the next decade in downtown? And again, that could be in several taller projects, that could be in more, you know, a, I guess, more numbers, but less dense version of, you know, smaller projects. Or that could be distributed through more infill in townhome duplexes or, you know, those sorts of kind of ways that you get that density there. I think that's some of the question that's kind of being there is how do you, how do we address? How do you absorb that to keep a healthy downtown, to keep, make sure, to your point, that there's people walking, it's walkable, there's people that are servicing those businesses that live in downtown, so creating that 18-hour experience, kind of the coffee to cocktail, as I think one of the consultants used. How do you create that experience? But how do we do that in the right way, that we're getting the density, capturing the density, moving downtown forward, but also doing it in a way that, you know, fits, I think, the maintaining that small-town feel, that small-town vibe that I think gets expressed a lot when we do the public surveys? So I think that's the, that's what everyone's kind of wrestling with right now. And I think would be great to get your all's input. This is some of the initial input, again, from the downtown advisory board, but it'd be great to, again, have that dialogue between the advisory boards and I think get that, that information back to Town Council. So when they go to consider it, we're, again, hopefully all moving forward with the plan and a direction that everyone's bought into, everyone's agreed to, that it's more about how do we implement this, rather than, you know, whether we like the plan or not, hopefully you find a plan that we all like. And it's like, let's go get it, let's go make it happen.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask a question? Are the two boards going to come together in some sort, or how is that conversation going to happen?
I don't know that there's any current plans for doing that in terms of bringing it together. I mean, I guess this is, we don't, we don't have to talk by letter or by this, but we thought that as an advisory board, this was an effective way to get some thoughts on paper from one advisory board to council, and obviously wanted to copy you all and be able to make this presentation to you all. But that's, I guess Conrad and I can discuss, or we can discuss with, with the consultant if there's something that's needed, obviously, as two advisory boards. We'd want to get council's blessing on that, because at the, you know, at the end of the day, both boards serve at their pleasure. So that's something they'd want us to do or have an interest in doing, and staff, you know, is, you know, thinks that we can support as well. That's, that's an idea, but I don't know that there's been any discussion about that yet.
In my opinion, I think it's a worthy idea, because if you, if we truly want to do a plan that is actionable and has things in it, I don't see a lot of that in this letter. And so I would love, I don't want to judge how these few people feel on a letter, because I don't agree with a lot of what's in here. And so I would rather have the discussion than me make remarks at this meeting saying that I don't agree with this and because I don't know the context of it, I don't know what they were talking about, I don't know what the thoughts were. So I would advise that we do something like that. I think the, what I got from the presentation that we had in this board is that this is just like, I'm sorry to bring up the 42 Gateway Plan, but the two plans are eerily similar to me in that both really have no teeth. Okay, I don't, I don't see actual items from either of those plans, because they're not prescriptive enough. And I don't think they're hitting the right things, and we're not talking about people and spaces and places enough in these, in these plans. Like, for instance, I just don't understand why there's not a connection of parks in this plan. That is what people want. People want to connect the parks, people want green space, they want to be able to walk the green space. Municipal Park was not in the core in this plan, which makes zero sense to me. Others may disagree with me, that's fine. I just don't understand why that, why Municipal Park is not in the downtown core plan. I don't agree with the density that's in here. I think the densest place should be on Main Street. I think you should allow for people to rebuild and rehabilitate, and I think mixed use needs to be on Main Street. I think we should have lower-level retail with upper-level residential on Main Street. I don't think we should have, we should, we should, we should leave it alone and build behind it, because that doesn't make any sense to it. And then I think there should be overlay districts as well. I think we need to talk about overlay districts and how we can kind of scale it back out from Main Street.
I don't read it, though, as building off of Main. I read it as building at the west end and east end, so that it's lower in the dead city center, but it should go out.
Yeah, so I think the goal was to try and keep two to three-story scale in kind of that area. So that doesn't mean you cannot have redevelopment along in that core stretch there. It was more trying to orient it more towards two to three-story, but if you're going to have higher, like, four, five, six-story, put that more at other places. It's not necessarily against density, but it's
No, I get that. I don't agree with that.
Okay, that's
I don't think we should leave it at two, three stories, especially if we're talking about having eventually, if everyone wants a train station in downtown Clayton, their densest development should be around a train station. And then last but not least, what I'm going to say is that we should never, ever, ever assume that the railroad right away is going to be ours to be able to use. There's, we should have probably some assumptions in this plan, or what would it look like if we don't have the railroad right away to use? I just, I see value in having the larger conversation. That's the, the main piece, one second.
Spinning Mill, you have the apartments, isn't it, how many commercials or restaurants do you have over there?
So Spinning Mill currently, there's where Luna Pizza is going?
Well, over, not in the Spinning Mill, but adjacent to it, there's some restaurants going over in that vicinity?
Not currently on that part of, not currently.
Not on that end. Thought there was some restaurants going.
The, on the west side, they have a new commercial.
Yeah, the pizza place, just one, just a pizza place? Yeah, okay. So it's just a pizza place? This only restaurant's going out on that end?
That's the only commercial currently there. There's some, there's a handful of different lots that could be used for commercial purposes. I think there's one or two corners there at the Roundabout. There's some other pieces along Front Street there. I think there's two, three to three-and-a-half acre lots there at the Roundabout on the kind of entrance into, is it the entrance into the Walk? Or I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to get my developments right, which, whatever ones come, come off of and kind of head back west off of the Roundabout. I believe each one of those corners is set aside as its own separate parcel that would be
I just remember reading about the pizza, I remember reading about the pizza place in the TBJ, and I was just, I was wondering if there were others.
But remember, you can't walk to anywhere else from there, there's no sidewalks. You can get sidewalks on Main Street there, like, you can't walk to Vincent's on a sidewalk from there. And we're never going to get a sidewalk across the tracks, because the railroad would never allow you to build a sidewalk across the tracks. So it's kind of a faux sidewalk across the tracks, but beyond that, there's no sidewalks there.
So you can get to Luna Pizza right now on sidewalk? Correct.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, the sidewalk turns at Central Street off of Main, and you can then connect into the multipurpose path that goes all the way from the post office. Well, actually, there's sidewalk both directions. You can go sidewalk up Front Street on the, not the So we have, we have construction funding to go east, and we have design funding currently, and I believe we got, we were approved for construction funding to go west to Deep River, but it's going to be several years...
Oh, okay.
...to be able to do that because of, A, funding availability, there's some design constraints and things like that that we have to work through to get through there. But we are, we are working on downtown sidewalk connectivity. We, there's the Campo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, their local area programs, local area, yeah, local area programs, the LAP program that allows us to be able to put in for different grants, and that's been a useful tool for greenway connections and sideways, sidewalk connections. But again, it's going to be several years until we're able to make all that, you know, have all that come to fruition.
So one other question. I know when we, when we had the very rapid presentation, one of the, one of the discussion topics was the possibility of having, as we're going up and, and developing, that we would do retail, commercial down and residential up. Is that still what we're, what is on the table? Is that what we're thinking in a similar architectural design to what we already have?
So similar to, I would say that that's certainly the desire of the Downtown Advisory Board here, would be have that mixed-use element with commercial at the bottom, residential on the top. I think, you know, typically in a downtown context, that's a, that's a good way to do, that's a good way to do that. There's also opportunities, though, where you'll have smaller sites that sometimes smaller-scale infill development that is multi-story works as well, where a commercial use may not work in the bottom. So I think that, having gone through a few of these, few of these different processes with consultants, I think you get, you know, you, you probably want to allow for a mix of that is what I've heard, but that, but the recommendation from the Downtown Advisory Board would be to, you know, emphasize that mixed use as much as possible. I think the Sandy Stevenson Building at Stephen, at Smith and Main is a good example of, you know, a mixed-use building and kind of that two-to-three-story scale.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you. Put up my agenda. Next item on the agenda is informal discussion and public comment. Sir, you have any comments? Yes, sir.
It's not on, it's not turned on.
Hit the little bring button.
Thank you. This is my first time, obviously. I just want to thank everyone for hearing all the people here. I know there were some comments by some of the people that I live with that I just want to just go on record and just say, like, I agree with what Councilman Williams said. Like, I really do hope to see more housing and especially low-income housing in Clayton and more opportunities for people to come and live here. And, you know, there were some comments about that that I just vehemently disagree, disagree with. And I grew up personally in a trailer park, and something like what they were proposing would have been wonderful for my family, living in a small little trailer. But, you know, I also want it done like you all recommended, the right way, where it's going to be something beneficial for everyone and is going to be, you know, just another example of something that's going to make Clayton really great. So again, I just want to thank everyone for the time you took to listen and for all your thoughts. I just wanted to communicate that and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the board has any final comments? Well, thank you. Any member of staff having any final comments?
No final comments. Um, I think, well, we had some training. The, I do have a final comment. So the training that UNC School of Government, Board Member Bland, if you have any, have you participated in the recent training? Was there anything you want to share to put you on the spot? Anything that you learned from the, the training that you just did?
I, I did learn a lot. Coming in, coming in green in January, I really needed it, and so I appreciate it. One of the things that I, that struck most of us was finally understanding who is responsible for what, who's legislative, who's administrative, who's, you know, quasi judicial. And I kind of knew, but they went into more depth. Another thing that, that I really benefited from were some of the breakout groups and understanding what some challenges some of the other communities are going through. And I've, I've shared that with a couple people, but, you know, Gaston County, being right outside Charlotte, is, is going through very much what we are. They don't have the million-and-a-half houses. You know, Charlotte's getting that, Lake Norman's getting that. Ours are in Raleigh. They also don't have affordable housing. We don't either. We really need housing. The only difference between us and them really is they have a sizable homeless population. And, and I honestly think the only reason we don't is because we don't have services. We don't have transportation. We don't have shelters. We don't have food kitchens. I think the only reason we don't experience that, because we're, we're sitting right here on the precipice of it. But all the bedroom communities were, were experiencing exactly the growth pattern that we're going through and all the challenges that we're experiencing. And, and it was good to hear from them how they're, how they're coping and, and what they're not coping with, because they don't know yet how. So thank you for that opportunity.
Great, yeah, thank you. That's, that's one of the, one of the other benefits of going to these UNC School of Government classes, if I can pitch in, is that you'll often get to hear other commissioners or other staff from other communities in the state. And it's really great to have that kind of confirmation or how other communities are dealing with the growth that we have here and, and the area that you all are in. So if you, I'll continue to forward you these classes, these opportunities. And then just also thank you to Echo. I think I really appreciate you all taking the time to volunteer. Sometimes decisions are not exactly the easy, they're difficult, but I just want to thank you as staff for, for serving on the board. Without your volunteerism, we wouldn't be able to do the job that we do. So thank you. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Dupree. I entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Board Member Liskom. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn. Thank you.